It's approved by the city council and committee of the whole meetings up to Iowa. Adopted and presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? We have roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right, we will convene a public hearing concerning the community development block grant CDBG downtown revitalization one, status of funds twenty dash DTR dash zero zero two Wilson Building project. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office? All right, we have Dan. I'm here for ECIA. The floor is yours, sir.
All right, let me know if you cannot hear me. I turned my camera on, so you should see my lips move as well. But I'm Dan Lobiaca with ECIA, the five county council of governments. And I am here simply to hold this public hearing. Simply as a reminder, we applied for the CDBG DTR funded grant to implement implement facade improvements to be made on the Wilson Building at two fifteen through two nineteen Fifth Avenue South. This grant provided four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the exterior items, including windows, masonry, and other material repair to complement this ten million dollar plus total building rehabilitation, bringing thirty-two quality housing units to downtown Clinton. With this grant, the scope from bidding to completion was set for just short of three years. So we reached the fifty percent completion mark several months ago. However, we could not submit claims due to concerns regarding labor standards requiring clarification. You will have one more pay app to approve on your agenda likely in September. Currently, per pay apps, we have reached the total grant spending on the project being complete. However, the final claim cannot be made until after this hearing, as well as HUD required monitoring. We need to have this grant reach closure by this fall. As with our other grants, other than the issues of which I spoke of, as well as a historical clarification on the windows, the build out itself has gone as planned. Grant funds ended up covering about five percent of the overall project, but an important contribution. No other changes outside of our scope have been altered since our bidding process. The budget reflects draws to date, and you will soon see a budget spending summarizing the entire balance of this five hundred thousand dollar grant. Our original performance target was to reach a halfway point within eighteen months and be completed by July of this year. The project is complete, and we should close the grant by September. We already hosted a state official site visit Tuesday, May sixteenth. So this was a basic summary of the activity schedules, project scope, objectives, and beneficiaries for this downtown revitalization project. If anyone has any questions, I am here to answer them or find an answer soon. And as always, I will let you know, or you can let me know if you have any additional questions, comments, or concerns in the future.
Thank you, Dan. Counsel, is there any questions for Dan?
What is the expected date of completion for rental?
You know, I that's probably not a question for us. The facade was our portion, and it's complete. And 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 just to let you know, we were down there in May, and it looks like they're they're ready. I think they might be renting up, but I'm not positive of that since we've been monitoring the facade portion. And frankly, that's been done. It's just been a little bit of a problem with some labor standards, things that we had to get straightened out before we can file claims.
First first six renters will move in August first.
It looks fantastic inside and out.
Any other questions for Dan?
Dan, thank you very much for being with us tonight and and holding tight as we went through some technical difficulties. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Sorry about that.
All right. Okay, there is not a resolution with this, so we'll move on to the next one. We'll convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for Sixth Avenue South MTA Station, Project W dash twenty twenty-three. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Council member Obrin.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for the Sixth Avenue South MTA Station, Project W twenty twenty-three. Will this resolution be adopted? Is presented.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this project?
Now, what are we doing? We go to the restroom where?
Yep. So it's actually a bus stop at the transfer point of Sixth Avenue South and South Second Street. Right. It's a new waiting room inside with exits, so it's going to be canted on the street, so face second and as well as Sixth Avenue South. Have seating and also ADA accessible seating. It'll have a break room for the driver and a restroom. This is a service facility there. It'll basically sit on the parking lot as we know it now. This shape and form right here will remove the two outside bus stops here and here, remove those. And it'll reconfigure the parking from about forty-seven to about forty-one, with new parking access there. This is the normal typical day from our people in the sky of that parking lot, so it shouldn't have any too great of impact on that as well. And we've been working at the Lafayette, and right now they have a game plan for spaces they need once that gets finalized. Also included the latest financial update that the council was ceiling and folks were discussing today, so you can kind of see. See, this is coming from Dennis's COVID and paraplants and the MTA transportation dollars. And he has a good balance there to be able to pay for this and not use any borrowed dollars.
Yeah, I I spoke with Dennis about this Anita, Matt, he said, sent out a lot.
That would be.
Yeah. So the the cost of this is five thirty, five hundred thirty-nine thousand. Building is about six hundred square foot, it's about eight hundred bucks a square foot. From my understanding, from my conversations with Anita, the money is for transit, so it needs to be used for transit. We're, how much was it we received again Anita? One point three. Yeah. Yep. Um, no, it's not on that. So basically, that money can be used for operations, but it can also be used for like transit items like this. Um, I think this initially, from what I gathered, started off around a hundred fifty thousand dollar project. The cost for me is a little too, a lot too steep at eight hundred dollars a square foot. I would, I don't think this is a bad project or a bad idea. Um, I don't know that. I feel it's a good choice of the funds. And I do not have a crystal ball, but we did not levy for transits, and we will probably most certainly be levying again for transit. So that's something just to keep in the back of your mind while you're making a decision.
This place having attendance. No, it would be open during the bus route times. It'll be locked up as far as the front, because only the public goes to the front part. Tracking. Right here. The public is only have access to this right here. Those doors will be locked after hours when there's not buses running. Uh, this will be access only by the drivers to come in, mainly these two rooms, just the mechanical room. Um, we don't know for sure, but also we are part of a state of Iowa grant for three electric buses. Uh, the charging stations will actually sit in the roadway where we pull the buses into the transfer point and recharge. We don't know how that all works yet, and it's just the very beginning. Iowa was just included that, and we as well are part of that. But we're thinking that mechanical room could be a place where that stuff has to go into, the other thing, control what's going on as the buses pull in. Like I said, this is just a start. Who knows, maybe ten years from now, fifty percent of our fleet is transferred over. But then we have this facility down there that's actually running those charging stations. Well, right now, as I've talked to a couple of other council members, they've actually literally seen the bus drivers have to stop around the route, on the route, different places and sprint in to be able to use the restroom. We don't like leaving the buses with folks on them. So in this case, you could actually have the people get off the bus, go into the bus stop area. Then the driver can move into the driver ring, move through, use the restrooms, get back on, and get ready to then do their routing.
So I I agree. I've seen the bus stop, buses stop all over the place, and I feel bad for them because, you know, I've been places where they've run in. But just a question, and I'm I'm not trying to stop any projects, but just a question. We are going to be purchasing the building next to the police station. Would these funds work in that building?
Well, right now, we have the county, state, folks that are in that building until we figure out, you know, the way to that. But then, but then we're leaving the buses completely unattended there and going down the block for that. Because we talked, I talked to a couple of you on that topic as well today, so.
Oh.
Yep. Is there any sort of, what what is making this thing cost so eight hundred some? What what do we know what's driving that price?
Well, it's reinforced, it's basically steel. We looked at lowering the cost, but then we ended up something that looked like, you know, a standard public restroom. It doesn't look that good. This is, we wanted to have a game changer in the downtown area there as a transfer point as we continue to work on the downtown versus just a public looking cinder block, square roof facility for people to wait for the bus and also for the drivers to be able to use. So Jason did run the numbers. He went from the five thirty-nine, not based on the bids, but five thirty-nine and then broke cost downs if we did like went within tresses and we we changed the roof from a slanted roof. Uh, redid some, changed the stone because this is a nice outer look to it. It's just not the cinder block look. And I think he came in about three seventy-nine, but as you keep doing that, it just looks less and less pleasing as you're putting this right in the, you know, middle of the downtown. We wanted to have something in in twenty years to look at. It still looks very modern, still very nice in here.
I I would agree. Like I talked to Matt earlier, the cost for me, I I agree, like I don't.
The seven thirty-eight.
I know. I don't. I don't like the number either, being that high. And I I think there are merits to the project because I I wouldn't want to stop somewhere randomly and have to go to the bathroom. I also, the porta potty down there, I wouldn't want to have to stop. So I'm too soon. I agree. I see the need. Again, that number just seems high. Do we ever see the number, the price of uh, construction? Like, is it going to come down in the next two or three years? Because it seems like every project we're bidding now is astronomical. And is it because it's really astronomical, or is it because people have gotten used to us paying? That's, I guess, the question. I had a crystal ball.
And we're not even paying it though, because a lot of times for
No, I, right, I understand.
When did the COVID funds have to be spent in time?
There's no, because our, our sex related state on them.
There is. Okay.
Good.
But but I guess at this point, you know, no time better than the present, though, if we want to be able to do this. Because as we, you know, we could just save it all and then every year make sure we lower the levy, or we could actually get a nice facility put in. I don't know. Over the next five years, we'll have another opportunity like this, because this was the cares and COVID dollars.
Do we know about the electric? We're getting those buses, sure.
Yeah, but well, the grant has been awarded to the state of Iowa. Yes. It's probably like, it's still like a two, two-year, man, just about to digress. But that, there's a lot that goes in that because it's electric, it's the training that has to get the community colleges, the people that can maintain them. And then there's these things that go on the ground, like a navel lens that you just pull across and charge.
I'm gonna say like it, if if that stuff's all incorporated, it might change it a little bit. It's hard to pause if that stuff's going to build it, but Dennis, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, on the charging stations, you know, that it's all new, so we're not quite sure. I, you know, that that would be the ultimate way to basically bus pull up to, they have the grid in the in the cement. I'm not sure how that all works yet. And we are, yes, we're we're in on for three buses, or actually a van and two buses, a light duty and a heavy duty. But yeah, the the drivers, they run all over, you know, the fixed route, they go to the, where they can for a quick break, and hopefully the the facilities are uh, empty, so they can go get in there, you know, because obviously they're they're busy. Uh, actually, I was looking back on on some of my history stuff. Transit was taken over by the city of Clayton like in nineteen seventy-three. We're at fifty years. We're finally building. You know, and I don't like the price either. I mean, I'm not, that's the only downfall of this whole project. It's a great project. It's just, it's what it is at this point. I I can't control that. But again, we're at fifty years of the of the city of Clayton that, yeah, running the the public transit and.
Those new buses don't have a restroom in them.
But but the truth of the fact is, it's not city money. It's all paid for and by the CARES Act.
This is, yeah, this is what we banked. Yes. When the CARES came in, we were able to bank. And the questions we asked about, you know, buying other things, or, you know, it's it's transit only, or probably federal fines if, you know, if some, if the money's diverted to another source.
You can operate out of that money. I mean, it was operating.
Can operate off of that money.
I think the chart too is saying the electric buses for our.
What was it?
It's actually a three hundred.
Yeah, I think it was three, when Anita gave the number.
Yeah, does this one, this final fund balance reflect what you discovered with the electric buses?
No, this one doesn't.
So what what does it change it to, Anita?
One moment.
I think it was a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
That was additionally needed. I think you're right, but I'll find my.
So that would put us at a negative twenty five. I mean, I, 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 I get it, Dennis. I I talk.
So, and I and I understand. I I have that heart, me too.
I'm just sick of my stomach thinking about the cost of this thing, and it's literally a break room, one restroom, and some some waiting area. I agree. It needs to look nice if we're going to put it there. You don't want just something that doesn't look good, that doesn't last. I'm concerned we'll be fully levying for your operations next year, which is going, you know, I, obviously, we can't not levy for you every year. We've used you as a, we've bounced.
With your piggy bank. I had the surplus, nobody else did, and now we're, we ran it down to.
But most certainly, um, so that's that's just a something you need to be, we all need to be considering right now. If we have to do eighty cents for you to operate, obviously, you're going to need to operate, especially if we got this brand new building. You know, how is that? What kind of picture is that going to be?
Correct.
Um, will the cost come down on this next year? Maybe. Could they go up? Maybe. Don't know. I just don't know.
I wish I could, yeah, have my, my crystal ball, yeah.
So it is not an option, Dennis, to make this more feasible as in an existing building right in that area, because I saw some that weren't, that didn't look like they were being used very much.
That building to my corner.
Well, I asked Matt, he ignored me. I said, let's bring a CP rail building up here. We got a little piece of history.
If we use a different.
If you use a different building, you move my transport point with it.
No, I mean, there, I noticed there's a couple of buildings like right there that weren't heavily, that didn't look like they were occupied.
There is the one that I believe is somebody, somebody bought and does nothing with. It's right next to that parking lot.
Yeah. I mean, but my, I would, I would like, I I think the council just needs to make a decision. I would like to explore a couple of alternative options right in that area, but we may not. I don't know how good long these bids are good for, if a decision needs made tonight, or if it could be made in two weeks or not. I I went down there this morning and snooped around, talked, you know, trying to, you know, wrap my head around it.
Dennis, how many years has been in a P?
Too many.
Forty, how many?
Thirty-nine.
We ever had a proper bus stop ever?
No, and like I said, the city took it over in nineteen seventy-three, and and those bus shelters were probably came in a few years after that. You know, and I mean, basically, when the city took over was because the public grants, the public funds was not available to the private, so interstate power, they transferred for a dollar at that point. And uh, I'm a long way.
I just look at it as that, you know, the public gets to use this as, you know, a very nice bus stop area to use for basically respecting our drivers and giving them an option to be able to stop real quick, take care of what they have to do, get back to be able to focus on the routes. It's at transfer point, which is brilliant as well, because then they all can then shoot out, do the route, come back. I don't know. I just think it, I think, you know, it's up to the council, but you know, here's the bids. They are what they are. We do have the dollars to do it. If we can tackle it, I don't think of, you know, we wait, anything's going to change. If we do, we'll do is basically reduce it to where we end up having a public facility that looks like a public facility that's not raining.
In that facility, in the in the the transfer station, basically, there will be monitors for the passengers. That, you know, basically, anybody can do that on their phone, you know, see where the buses are at when they're coming. They're heated, it's air conditioned. Obviously, they're not that way now. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
It's a, it's an additional one hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars that would come from the match. It removes two buses of what we had already budgeted for, the match portion, and then it adds these items. And Dennis provided that three hundred thousand dollar number, so the difference is another one hundred eighty-one thousand dollars that would come out of that number.
Does that put the acquisition?
Well, it doesn't put us negative. Keep in mind that there is a highlighted, there's a number above the highlighted that says we have a fund balance policy to keep twenty percent of our operating expenses. Yeah, that's the excess beyond that twenty percent. So, yeah, if you do that math, it's twenty-four thousand dollars that dips into that fund balance policy. But you know, Dennis, if there's any department within the city that the federal government is going to throw money at, it is transit, because they got all that CARES money, you know, they they're like, whoops, we got too much money, so what'd you spend on transit last year? Here, have some money. And so he, you know, even the electric cars are becoming a big thing, you know. I I can see that changing. That's a very fluid number.
Any other comments?
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 We'll convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contracts for demolition of structures, asbestos removal, four oh five Seventh Avenue South, Project K dash twenty twenty-three, Phase ten. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? You're online, star six one mute views. Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing.
Council member Seale. Your honor, a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for Project K twenty twenty-three, Phase X, demolition of structures, asbestos removal, four oh five Seventh Avenue South. I move this be adopted as.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Just wanted to correct your attention where this is, right where they're doing construction right now, a brush from Discovery Center. For this, you may have known if you've been here more than a day, this is a little brist store, to say that in there. It's right by Mike Spun's food. It's sort of encompasses Mike Spun's food. Uh, so we're looking to then clear this down and have that removed, clean that up right there. Had, uh, some major issues with the roof, caused some falling in and then wetness, et cetera, so it was really, really poor condition. So it'd be nice to, and then right to the right of this picture is a car. After a little.
Yeah, it's much worse than it looks on the outside. And then it does. I think the air conditioner is like falling through the.
Actually went through.
Yeah, it's falling. It's like hanging there. It's not on the floor yet.
All right, any discussion on this together? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Convene a public hearing concerning accepting bids and awarding contract for demolition of structures, three two three Second Avenue South, Project A dash twenty twenty-three, Phase eleven. We heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
I was on Phase ten, not Phase X.
All right.
Round him, I get my Roman.
Is there anybody I'd like to address? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Council member Davis.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution accepting bid and awarding contract for Project K dash twenty twenty-three, Phase eleven, demolition of structure, three two three, Second Avenue South. I move it to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was, we're getting a lot of bids for these, and we only, is there any insight?
Yeah, so this is actually, in this this case, this is a completely full house. You can't even get in.
Yeah.
So part of the demo, not only is racking because asbestos, but also because all the stuff has.
Man, this is inexpensive.
Yes.
So are we going to do a judgment since this was court ordered?
Yeah, maybe, but there's actually, the gentleman doesn't have any money. It's sort of like we did with, you remember, not the same names, but the, we raised cats. So the neighbors are very excited.
This is an expensive roof, yeah. And Lisa sent me some pictures and then.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this? Frank, can we have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 We'll convene a public hearing concerning sale of city-owned property at nine two four North Third Street. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Council member Curran.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of nine twenty-four North Third Street, Chad Berens LLC for eight thousand dollars. I move it to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
No, I I'm, I figured this would be the house that someone wanted, and we're going to see on the next one that this is working out great because that, we're not paying to demo that other house, and it's gonna work out.
Even just a lump on that, but this this right here, the investment now.
No, and that's going to be a stinking nice house when it's done.
And I know the neighbors will be more than happy. They got standing there talking to the neighbors. Well, I drove by during the family homeboys, we had campers that were in Copland Park, and they were looking right at these two buildings. It's just like, wouldn't it be nice if it was like a little.
It'll look better by next year.
He's got a good idea. Get everyone's out.
All right. Any other discussion? And we have roll call, please.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Yes. We'll convene a public hearing concerning sale of city-owned property at nine twenty North Third Street. We heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Council members that would like to address the public hearing? All right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Council member Seale.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of nine twenty North Third Street to Chad Berens LLC for five hundred dollars. I move this to be adopted as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? All right, can we have roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning sale of city-owned property at one two two seven Eighth Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? All right, any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Council member Dennis.
Your honor, a resolution authorized sale of twelve twenty seventy Seventh Avenue South, cut above lot cared for five dollars, five hundred and one dollars, fifty percent. Some of this said two percent is red. Fifty percent, some of this said, two percent is red.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Right, can we have roll call, please?
He does.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
We mean a public hearing concerning sale of city-owned property at six five five and six five seven Sixth Avenue South. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? All right, hearing done, we will close the public hearing, uh, Councilmember Shemmers.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution outlining bid off procedure and resetting public hearing on the proposed sale of six five five. In six five seven Sixth Avenue South, I, the resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
Just want to give council visual on where we're at, so Sixth Avenue South, South Seventh Street. Here's six five seven, six five five, this is, uh, the Stoltenberg's up here at six five one Sixth Avenue. Put a bid in, this is new properties here, salon right here, uh, for that. Uh, both basically used either for green space or then just expand their own property here as well. So just want to let you know where it was, who the folks putting in there.
Any other discussion? And we have. We're on roll call.
Yeah. Want to go, good.
We have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning sale of city-owned property at two three one two North Sixth Street. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office? Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing?
I just, I drove up by there, it's kind of make a nice little side yard form.
Yeah, it's not a very big block, yeah. Yeah, that's one of those things, build a border, right?
Anything else for the public hearing? Uh, hearing done, we will close the public hearing, Councilmember Curran.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of twenty-three twelve North Sixth Street, to Charles Wood for five hundred dollars. I move to be adopted and presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We have roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, uh, we're going to move to the audience comment section, uh, I do have a few of these here. Uh, just to remind the procedures of the audience comment section, we'll come up, have you state your name and your address for the record. Uh, it's not a debate forum with the council, and then we will have, uh, if we need further. Further, uh, information, we'll get the staff, and, uh, it's a three-minute time limit for each person. So the first one I have, Carl, on up, sir.
Counsel, I have a question on the City Planning Commission.
Carl, you got to think your name and your.
Well, I'm sorry. And you know, okay, Carl Nord, eight oh three North Third Street, Clinton Island. I have a question on the City Planning Commission. Number one, what is the City Planning Commission? What powers do the City Planning Commission have? And do the planning commission have the power to replace the zoning board? Another one, what comes after the planning commission? In these steps? And who does the planning commission report to? Them are my questions.
Okay.
Have you have an answer on it?
Yep.
We can answer those then.
Answer the meeting?
That's right, or unless you want to give me a vote, or talk about anything tomorrow?
No, I'll wait after the meeting.
It could be long, we have the library at the end.
Well, I, I.
I want to answer your questions, if they're not allowed to under law, because it's not on the agenda, so that's why, that's why I can chat.
Oh, that's okay, even though I submitted.
They're very easy questions to answer, we just, we can't do that because it's not on the agenda. And this, anything that we discuss has to be on the agenda, so all the citizens throughout the city have the opportunity to know what's going to be discussed, so.
So if I come again, put it on the agenda. Okay, I want other people to know this, I'm not the. Very, I'm not that educated a person, and I don't have all this information, so.
We'll get it, we'll get it. That's all good question.
Thank you.
Amber.
Hello, how are you guys?
Say your name and your address for the record.
Amber Peters, seven forty-three Eighth Avenue South. And. So I would like to address the memorials, and I was just wondering, um. We've had some issues with, um, a certain one in town, and I just didn't quite understand, um, why. Um, so I guess the one on Fifth Avenue South and South Fifth Street. Uh, is the one in my, is the one in concern. Have some pictures of it here, I can send around after I'm done, and then, um. So, um, I lived in Clinton, was born, grew up, raised, you know, went to college, all that, um, so. My husband was murdered on that corner, and, um, their murder hasn't been solved, which is fine, but my kids go to Prince of Peace. When we drive by there, we put a memorial up, we went to Home Depot, we bought this wreath, um, we made it. And that took us a week, and we got it up, and, um, it keeps coming down. And we drive by it on the way to school and from school, and, um, the kids were pretty disappointing and disappointed that it has came down twice. Um, we are still going through a grieving process, uh, my kids are fourteen, twelve, and then I have an eleven-month-old. So his father died ten days before he was born, but we're all grieving, um, they are in therapy, we're in therapy. So this is the part about grieving processes, I guess what I'm trying to get to. Um, so I provided everybody with a, what I believe is that the city code for memorials, because it's kind of, it's kind of sticky. And, um, like I said, I. If I could, I, I, if I could give you these pictures, um, there is other memorials up around town that, um, either. Are tied to a city pole or aren't tied to a city pole. So my, my memorial was, in the picture, it is tied to a city pole. But that is because, um, a citizen. Keeps trying to remove it, so that's the only reason why mine is tied to a city pole. But the others that I have, um, provided here, two, there's three altogether, two are. Tied to some type of city pole and one is not. So I just would like to ask the question, um, can my memorial go back up for me and my children? And here's the pictures.
I can answer that question after this.
Okay.
I mean, Jim and I both can.
Okay, so that's. Yeah, yes. Okay. Thank you very. Jackie?
Hi, my name is Jackie Armstrong. My address is five oh seven Third Avenue North, Clinton Iowa, five two seven three two. And I'm also here for the memorial. And I know this ain't supposed to be like a crying session, but like Amber said, it's part of the grieving process. It was a symbol of somebody who was important. And were to be taken down once and twice. And I'm the one that went to Home Depot and got the pole and hung the wreath up. The second pole. Amber's my goddaughter, I've been helped raise her since she was five. Her mom passed away a while, like five years ago or so, and her dad lives in Tennessee, so I've been her. Emotional support, I'm the one that picked her up from the hospital the night that he was shot. Blood all over her stomach, she was due in a week, had a baby, you know, and it was very traumatizing. And it felt good just to hang a wreath up to remember him. Because he was important, and he was a good guy. And, uh, he was important to us. And I don't think having a wreath just sitting on the corner so you can drive by and. Wave at the pitcher and just remember him. I don't think that's too much to ask. And I hope that you guys give her and give us. A good reason why it can't be there, and if you don't give us a reason why it can't be there. I hope you give us, able to put it back up, because it's important for us and for the kids. That's about all I got to say, I just want to know it's important for her to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana?
Dana White, four twenty-three Fourth Avenue South, Clinton Iowa. I was up. This memorial, and they were. Serving, you know, dinners and stuff like that to pass her by, you know, and, and I thought it was pretty cool, but. Then I realized, when I turned around, this man was looking at me, and I was sitting on the. In a chair on the sidewalk, and, you know, all the people, the younger people, they were saying, well, Miss Dana. You know, this is city property, and, you know, we should be able to be out here. Well, the officers came and, you know, they were very polite, they were, you know, um. You know, they make you. They were with us, I'd say that, you know, but the thing of it is, I, I think that. Were things like this, and hopefully, we don't have many more of those problems like that. But that, um, there should be maybe a time limit that. These, um. You know, memorials could be set up, or a place where they could be. Set aside, you know. I like that.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. Uh, Wanda?
One of five three, four forty-four Fifth Avenue South, apartment two oh one. I'm also here for the memorial. I lived at that corner for eight years, and I heard the shooting that night. Bing, 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 bing. Didn't know the guy, but he was nice to my son. Not good at this, he's, he's special needs, so. I can't do this, he always said, hey, son, you gotta watch where you're walking at, because, you know, he always goes to, he walks to Scooter's, Starbucks, and. And he's like, you gotta be careful where you're watching, I'll walk out in this neighborhood, shortly after that, you know, he got murdered. And every time they have a memorial over there, they always invite me and my son and my neighbor. She lives on the third floor, they're very kind to us. And the one guy I know him, Jeffrey, the one neighbor that always takes the memorial down and complains about it. Um, he's got a, a white guy staying in front of his house, he's homeless. And his dog goes in his yard, poops in the yard, don't see nothing now. But the minute, you know, a black person does. Nine one one, so I think it's just a prejudice thing, and the memorial needs to go back.
Did he talk, talk about your saying? Jackie?
Yeah, he just said special needs people need to be locked down. And not go out by themselves, but he's special needs, but he knows his way home and. Mentally, he's eight years old, but he's very friendly to everybody. I mean, he didn't know none of these people, and he go right up to him, except Amber, he knows Amber, because she used to work with him with him, not him, uh, yeah, well. But he go up to everyone, hi, my name's Caleb, nice to meet you. And he tried that with Jeffrey, but Jeffrey's like. Go on back home. But, I mean, he has a dog and a homeless man camped out in front of a yard, which the city ain't doing nothing about that. That car's been there for three weeks now, and that man, that dog's been living in that car. So that's a big dog to be out there in that heat. But the minute these people are on his yard, he's calling nine one one. So why ain't he calling nine one one for a dog? That's it.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Uh, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I move the, who approves of consent, as they're last presented, both as attached.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
There's one comment, no discussion, um, item six J and six P, we're working on a marine that Josh has put in. I know a lot of time in the past, how many months, and getting this project.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing done. We have roll call, please.
That's my decision.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Not for Sealy? May your honor, I move to receive, approve and place on file, plate listing one, two, and three.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We have roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Councilmember Curran. I thank you, your honor, I have a resolution setting the time and date of public meeting for taking action on a petition requesting the amendment and reestablishment of the downtown funded. Self-supported municipal improvement district, Smith two, I move to be adopted and presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh. If you, uh, watched the Smith meeting, um, the board did vote, uh, attorney Nathan and Bogan were online. There are, I think, three courses of action that council could take at this point. Those courses have not been delivered to you all yet, so you can make an informed decision on how to move forward. Uh, so I would request that we get a motion to, uh. Postpone this until the August eighth meeting, so that you guys can have that information from the attorney, um, and go from there.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second to postpone this to the August eighth meeting. Okay, all right, uh, is there any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, and the plan is get those courses of action to you sooner than later, so you can have time to move it over prior to.
All right, should we have roll call on that motion, please?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, so this will be postponed until August eighth. Moving on, Councilmember Dedman.
Thank you, your honor. A resolution adopting U M B Bank, N A of West Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as payment agent, help register. And transfer agent, proving up, payment agent, and help register and transfer agent, and authorizing the execution of this agreement. Move that agreement as ready.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution, approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement. Form of loan agreement, authorizing provided for the issuance of nine million four hundred and five thousand thousand general operating capital loan notes. Series twenty twenty-three C and eleven attached to case safe, safe notes. Approval of the tax of gender certificate and continued disclosure certificate. I move that to the next president.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution setting carrying on the proposal of city-owned property, eleven twenty-eight, Eighth Avenue South, seven fifty-one, Twelfth Avenue South, six fifty-five, First Avenue, and six fifty-one, Seventh Avenue South. I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
So this came, these were done before you guys approved the, the new policy. So we're gonna put these back out, three of them, but one's gonna be put on the demo. Seven fifty-one, twelfth avenue, but the other three will be put back out. They have their corresponding dates. But when they bid, so then all the bidders then fall under the new policy that you guys all set for the for purchasing and re-renovating um, families.
I just have one item. Mister Matt.
Here's your.
It's what we talked about and I, like I told you, I'm completely fine with scheduled tours to save staff today, but I just wanna verify if someone works eight to five and they can only get a day off and they make prior arrangements that we will make an attempt.
We've done that already. We'll make sure, for the staff, it really helps. We've had a couple of days where they've had scheduled times and they.
Well, it's my understanding, a lot of people are showing up.
Yes.
At these last couple of ones, right? So that's nice, knock it all out. But someone that's serious.
Especially if the other thing too is we'll be fair in a portion, no matter what, but if we're not getting anybody coming, somebody's interest, we'll definitely make the steps to, to show them.
Okay.
Yeah, but if we still have seven people looking for it, or once Tammy's group's been very flexible, make sure. Just as long as it's not a habit.
Any more discussion on?
Let's hope we get some offers.
Yes.
Can we have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing mayor to sign community catalyst and remediation grant program contract with the Iowa, Iowa Economic Development Authority for the rehabilitation of three oh three, South Third Street. I move that to be adopted as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
So this is the north older Bethel Church for to be rehab. These next two, these two are forming together. So this is a out-of-cycle emergency award by the state of Iowa to help get the roof, the foundation, the windows, the door and all that stuff secured and picked up to bring that back into a place that people can utilize to go to.
Alright, any other discussion on this? We have roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Councilmember Shavers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing execution of development agreement with Great Revivalist Company LLC for the rehabilitation project at three oh three, South Third Street pursuant to Iowa Economic Development Authority contract twenty-three dash CBF dash E M D R G dash zero zero three. I move the resolution to be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? You have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving and authorizing usage of F Y E twenty twenty-four cultural and arts grants fund for the Quad City Art Public Sculpture Program and Van Shell Sound System Project. This resolution to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Oh, the price tag, guys. No, I think this is awesome. I'm, I'm excited, so.
Kevin Maynard is pumped up too, so.
Oh my.
Yes.
You talked to Kevin and I talked to Dawn and both of them were like, oh, no, it's gonna be, the public art project is, is to add some of these things down there and, you know, I'm gonna push the Van Shell Sound Project, you know, we've wanted to do that for years and years. And just had never had an opportunity like this before where we've got, you know, a person that can do it. That would have the funds to do it and it's gonna allow Van Shell to be even more, because now you don't have to um, say, okay, now where are we gonna get sound from and what's the sound gonna be? Who's gonna set it up? Just let the switch and it works. I mean, essentially you have to plug your mic. And again, it's really, not, not that it's gonna, we're not gonna be able to, you know, have a tailgate tallboy concert there. But we're certainly gonna be able to have local bands there. Just some good, good, you know, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna follow and feel like there's stuff, so.
The exciting part too is.
Phil just said he wants to have it. His own cares.
Absolutely. And the exciting part is that it's, for those that don't know, Penney's will apologize, but the way the cultural part works with the Quad Cities part is they have sculptures that will happen, create sculptures and they'll be put into this uh, list and then we'll get to actually rotate through to pick the ones we want. We can then either, and I think somebody's in our audience. I should have him say this, cause he's probably very excited too. And another thing is many of the artists that are doing the work are actually Iowa artists. But is there anything you'd like to say, sir?
You came all the way.
Yeah. Good evening. I, I'm Kevin Maynard, Executive Director, Quad City Arts. Mostly, I'm just excited to see that you guys are, are looking at this and doing the public sculpture program. Uh, as Matt said, I mean, we're very excited to, you know, bring some public sculpture here, uh, and to do this along the riverfront. I mean, I'm excited, cause I, I run the Clinton half and so it'll be, you know. There too, so. Uh, but also, I mean, like, like Matt said, the cool thing is that, um, you know, these sculptures are put into a list and so you can see and select those. Um, we, we, we will do this like with our other cities as well, so it's a nice thing to just kinda come together and have the conversation with other city administrators or see how they're doing their, their art programs. Uh, but also, yeah, there are many Iowa artists there as well, and so it's just a nice way to beautify the riverfront and you know, recycle those every year. So, yeah. Thank you.
I'll still be up here.
Um, so I mean, we, it'll be next year. I mean, so our, our program just ended. Um, but we can, I mean, there's always options and we can probably figure something out. So, I mean, but, yeah, so we can, we can talk, Matt.
Right now and then, we're gonna leverage public works by four concrete pads. Cause then each sculpture will be, you know, secured to that. Uh, Greg and I have been talking about, so we can, Councilmember Obrin, I've been talking about uh, actually having a fifth pad that we would offer up to Clint Community College to the welding program and art program, where they could have somebody create something there and then they could be on display as well. So we're just kinda being creative in that way. It's just an added spice on them. And go go with the murals.
Yes.
Alright. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Do we have roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Councilmember Shavers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing Transportation Director to implement a new fixed bus route to include the Lions Business Park as part of the route. I move the resolution to be adopted as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
By.
This, go ahead, Councilmember.
By adding this new route, it doesn't take away from any other. I think we should have Dennis come on.
Yeah, is this resolution back?
I'll send Jason up here.
Councilman Musman, what, what was the question?
This is by adding this new route, not taking.
No. No, it's a new, complete new route. Basically this, this, I might as say this has probably been in action since twenty twenty, when Bridgeview moved out there to the Lions Business Park and we did not have service directly to their site. So this, this encompasses that, takes care of that issue.
But Dennis, don't be so modest, but you did provide service in a different manner.
We, we provided service the whole time, uh, with the basically shuttle to them because of uh, the need for them to, to get to their appointments and such, but uh, being fixed route, you know, they can just get on the bus and, you know, they don't worry about appointments or nothing like that. So that's, that's what a fixed route does. Makes it more convenient, more accessible for them. We're gonna, the twenty-first of August. This, this will be a trial period for till December first, which is a Friday, so.
We're gonna wait till school started to get good data for the three months as well and then, you know, with the other part on the east coast, across the river.
Yeah, uh, several of you, I think everybody got the, the, the new version or new draft today. Last night, uh, the city of Fulton had, uh, they're, they're a part of this plan. They're, they're, they reached out to us in the spring a couple of times and uh, so we thought, okay, let's try, see if they wanted to be part of this, this new route. But obviously they'd have to pay a portion. And it's just a small loop inside their city to get them to have access to Clinton, our, you know, our transit system. So last night, uh, they wanted a, a secured dollar amount. I, I told them twenty-five percent of our operational cost, like forty thousand, round everything off. So ten thousand dollars for the uh, three months to operate, you know, to make them part of this new route. And I, and I told them, we were basically, we're gonna move forward no matter what. So I think they got the idea that, oh, we're coming over anyway. So, and so they thought, well, we don't wanna, why should we pay? Well, so I changed, you guys got the new copies of the new draft this morning? Cause I already had it, you know, without them, if they don't, they don't join in on this venture. So phone call this afternoon, I think they're back in.
They need that bus route.
Yeah, and ba- and basically with, what this does for them, I mean, we're going over there on a cost recovery on, on our door-to-door. So twenty-two dollars a trip is very expensive for over there and in command. You know, because it's not, it's not fair for the, the city taxpayers to fund into these other cities. So we try to get cost recovery. So I lost my train of thought, but anyway.
So are you gonna have, so they basically tabled it to their next council meeting. I watched them.
Okay.
They, they had a lot of questions and not all the answers. They, they definitely seemed interested.
They were very positive.
Very confused about the comment of, we're doing this no matter what, thinking that we weren't driving our buses to Fulton.
Yes.
Of them participating or not. So what's your next step? Are you setting up another meeting with the council, the mayor, the city administrator?
Well, with the conversation today, we're gonna send, Matt and I will send a, a email to the acting city administrator, Police Chief Nick Nebbling. He's been, he's been in our contact and basically we're doing a, um, you know, a dollar amount. You know, I talked to Nina today about finance, about maybe, you know, so I can get my year-end numbers done and it's gonna be first part of August or so, so we'll probably decide on a number, give them a number, um, not to exceed or whatever. And uh, and that should do it.
Okay.
I think that will, that will, that will ease her palms about it.
I would like to see the trial. Obviously, I, we, I, I would like to see how it goes, cause I, I do think there is good potential left and, and, you know, Fulton has crossed the river in Illinois, but it's still Clinton Fulton Command, as far as I'm concerned. Um, so I think, I like, I like the idea. I hope they can work it out. I think, you know, their budget is probably, they're a much smaller town. It's a lot different than our budget, so that this may be something that, you know.
Yeah.
That's the decision.
Yeah, I mean, there's something they, you know, if, if this works, maybe they'll work it in for in their full budget for it. They, they talked at the time about having their own route over there. You know, basically we would provide it. But basically it'd be a bigger within their city and we'd just come and get, get across the bridge to tie up that Walgreens or up there with our main lines. So just get them into our, our system.
Yeah.
You know, so. I've got some, some calls into for, I think we're exempt. Municipalities are pretty much exempt for a lot of the federal stuff, but I've got some uh, questions out to them to double check. Yeah. Yeah.
Couple comments, uh. This is gonna be huge for the Bridgeview portion, and I've been working with Matt for a long time on this. Um, and timing is everything. The timing is really good for them. They're, they are bringing on Bridgeview to do programs next month, uh, which the bus route will be extremely important, because the majority of some of the riders will have the ability to have driver's license. And this will be their one access. So, again, the timing is perfect on that. So with that being said, I know the uh, Resource Center for the county relies on Bridgeview and this connection is outstanding, because it does connect both the county facilities to Bridgeview and hopefully with Fulton, I do think that's a, that's a icing on the cake. So uh, this will assist the Bridgeview and Resource Center that the sheriff has got going on uh, tremendously. And I've been talking to some of the, uh, the county people who work in that area. So there's a lot of bonuses on that. Those two programs kicking next month, not to mention the other program, which is the Lighthouse opens up next month. autism, which is right next door. They have four families. Now, how many of those families will be participating? I don't know, but I bet at least one will. So there's gonna be a lot of use with all that. Now, all that being said, I do sit on the Bridgeview Board. There are no urinary interests on my behalf. However, I do approve their budget, so I will be abstaining on this vote.
Oh, definitely.
And Dennis, she's wanna give everybody a quick, uh, for the mic, the, the route and how.
Yes. Yeah. My Iowa router, my. Basically, it's gonna be based off of the courthouse. So on the west side of the courthouse, there's a fire lane uh, that we will pull off, you know, with our buses. Uh, it will be able to link up with the thirteenth Avenue North bus there on, it's on the, on Third Street. Talked to Sheriff Greenwell about it. He was gonna talk to the county supervisors. They did not seem, you know, they, it's obviously very positive for the county programs and that's what they, they like to see. So start off there, go, go up third to ninth, up third to nineteenth over to Fulton, if that does, um, if that continues going, you know, like I'm thinking of very positive, I'm thinking they're, they're gonna be with us. Come back, just a, a short loop inside a block or so of Fulton, back out to uh, back to third, go up the hill to the county admin building on request. It's on a daily or now it's gonna basically be daily uh, every half hour trip, cause this will run eight, eight oh five to three thirty-five, seven and a half hours on the street. So now we go up, certificates on Tuesdays, but there's other programs up there now at the county admin building. So this will be able to serve them, them other, uh, I think R S V P, R S V P one up there. I'm not sure all the other ones, but there, there's more up there now, so it will serve them better. So that, if there's, if there's a, a need, the route will can flex up into, through the county admin building, down, back to Third Street. Uh, so we get the ASAC building there, the, the old school, up to Main Avenue, out, take a left, out to nineteenth Northwest. So we hit the, the Bridgeview uh, uh, data dimension area out there and then come back through on uh, Springdale Drive, down by the, the Lighthouse School. I just, they got a website, yeah. Yeah, they got, they got a website up and going now. I don't know if you've seen that, I just seen it. Yes, yeah. Actually, that, that particular school, you know, hit, you know, thirteenth Avenue North comes right by on Bluff. So it'll have two routes on, on each side of it for them. So I mean, they'll, that will, yeah, they'll have access to the city with, with that.
Say that a lot of people don't know that that school is home of the Lighthouse.
Yeah, I didn't know either, so I found it today.
We're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Pull up their website. They have a nice video. I, I was, yeah. Science rooms are unbelievable. I mean, very, very nice.
So that'll be nice to have that additional. Well, I hope this works out, Dennis.
Yeah, and yet then from there, come by the Lighthouse School, um, depending, we'll, we'll probably take a left. This changed, because I, when I had six or seven more minutes from maybe not having Fulton. depending, we'll, we'll probably take a left. This changed, because I, when I had six or seven more minutes from maybe not having Fulton, we were gonna go down Fourth Avenue North over to Third, and then back to the, uh, the Chair Department, uh, courthouse area. But with that, we'll probably take a left on Bluff, go up around, uh, Seventh Avenue North, you know, go around the courthouse and back around, so you're back facing north on Third Street, you know, in, in that fire lane. In, in that fire lane, we're in, talk to Sheriff Greenwell, you know, we're, we're gonna be there five minutes, every half hour, so. And with that, you know, the other existing routes, the main avenue is on the front side on Second Street, the thirteenth on, um, thirteenth is on Third Street, takes a left there on Seventh Avenue North to get on the Bluff. The route will take off at like five after the hour and twenty-five to the hour, so that way, the thirteenth, if they're coming from downtown, the thirteenth Avenue North transfers can be made right there, you know, from bus to bus. So.
Just gonna say, I can say that the Lions Business Part Board is very happy to hear that this is going through.
Well, they moved in twenty twenty, and, you know, it's three years. It's, hopefully, we can make, generate enough rides to keep it, keep it rolling.
So after that, we're out. Oops, sorry.
I was just gonna say, Bridgeview Board, like, it was a lot of work, guys. I mean, it, I'd like to say it was only a couple of months, but it was a lot longer than that, probably a better part of a year. Actually, put into paper, at least between anatomy and dealing with the Bridgeview Board, and Dennis, um, they wanna thank you as well, so the Bridgeview Board.
Thank you.
Good job.
He's a designer.
Yeah. I can change it.
Hey, Your Honor, I was just gonna say, you know, and I, I don't know what the pleasure is, but depending on where Fulton's at, I mean, because what, what are you gonna think you're gonna be going across the bridge, six, seven minutes doing that?
Yes.
So that's less than twenty percent of the total route, so maybe something to think about as you're talking with them, because I think cost may be a same for them, especially during the trial run, to see if there's users, um, that benefit.
Yeah, but with that, we have to, any kind of fixed route that goes in service, we have to provide the, uh, the pair of transit door-to-door at the same thing. So three quarters from, from that route, that loop that's over there, under A D A regulations, we have to provide, uh, the door-to-door service, three quarters a mile from our route over there at our rate.
That would change.
So.
We charge for that or no?
Well, we, they charge at the same rate as the city of Clinton, which is two dollars. Fixed route's a dollar for an adult, so the, the pair can.
You're saying this would expand your scope outside of just that fixed route?
It's, it's, yeah.
It does.
It does. You, you can't just do a fixed route without the, uh, complimentary. It's not complimentary, but basically, the, the accessible vehicles for the ones that cannot walk to the corner, and not, for whatever reason, can't use the fixed route.
So you'd have to send a, a different one of our small.
Yes. And we do now. We're, we're going over there, but they're, they're paying a, you know, like I said, cost recovery. We're trying to get as much of our money back that we're. Well, there, the, it's private pay. The city of Fulton is not.
They're not.
And same with city of Comanche. They, it's, it's a private pay. The people are paying themselves, or their health insurance.
Yeah.
You know, or some of that.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Anything else?
Get back real soon.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
All right, there's no unfinished business. Councilmember Oberen.
Move adjourn to five P M, August eighth, twenty twenty-three.
We adjourn.
Hey, Judge, wanna stop recording and start a new one?
Yes.
My dad was like, how long are you gonna be?